Good morning, we on the record. As Chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia, in accordance with DC Official Code Section 2576 of the Open Meetings Act, I am welcoming you to the regular scheduled meeting of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. This meeting has been conducted pursuant to guidance made available by the District of Columbia's Office of Open Government regarding electronic meetings held by public bodies. Although the mayor's declared public emergency expired February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, public bodies may continue to meet remotely pursuant to the electronic meeting requirements of the OMA. Electronic meetings by the ABC Board are also authorized under Title twenty-five, twenty-five, two zero four point one. Pursuant to the OMA requirements, notice of today's meeting was provided forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting on ABRA's website and on the district's central meeting calendar. The notice includes the time, date, agenda, and call-in or login information for public participation. This electronic meeting has been hosted by a WebEx account provided by the District of Columbia government. Please address any questions or complaints to the OOG at opengovoffice@dc.gov. My name is Donovan Anderson, I'm Chairman of the Board. I would like to introduce the other members of the ABC Board, who are also participating electronically pursuant to Mayor's Order twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Please respond when I announce your name. Mr. James Short.
Mr. James Short, present.
Mr. Bobby Cato.
Bobby Cato, present.
Ms. Rafi Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, present.
Ms. Jenny Hansen.
Hansen, present.
Edward Grandis.
Edward Grandis, present.
The Board has six members in attendance for the conduct of business today in that constituency forum. Before we get underway with the hearing calendar, I need to make a few instructions very clear for the conduct of this hearing that's understood by everyone. There are, there are fourteen cases on today's calendar, the entire calendar for the day. Once your case is called, I will take a moment for IT specialists to elevate the rights for each party to enable the camera and microphone. Then and only then will you have the ability to enable your equipment. If your case has not been heard, you will remain mute and your camera will be disabled. At the conclusion of each case, the parties will have the option to leave. If the party chooses to stay, all cameras and microphone for the concluded case will be disabled. Should you have any questions or require technical assistance during the hearing, please submit them using the question and answer feature. Our first case for the day is a protest hearing status case number nineteen PRO zero zero one six three, Ultra Bar Chrome, license number seven four seven six seven. Ms. Foschman, can you please elevate the right of the party to this case, please?
Good morning, please stand by. Sidon Johannes, your rights have been elevated. I do not see Commissioner Kevin Wilsie. Ashley Steinberg, your rights have been elevated. And Michael Shaco, your rights have been elevated. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Foschman.
I don't know if this is out of order, but there is another commissioner because Kevin Wilsie no longer serves and he is in the waiting room, it's gonna-
And who's that, can you, what is that person's name? They can identify themselves, so we will, we will elevate that person's right. Who is that person?
Commissioner Schenkel.
Ms. Foschman, do you see Commissioner Schenkel on the line?
He has been elevated, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, do you have a camera, sir? If there one other camera, alright, good. Alright, good morning, everyone. This is a protest hearing status. I would like the party to introduce themselves on the record, so let's start with the licensee.
Sidon Johannes, on behalf of the licensee, and that's S I D O N Y O H A N N E S.
And let's have, who's representing the ANC?
Hi, I'm Commissioner Michael Schenkel. It is M I C H A E L. Last name is S H A N K L E. I am the Chair of ANC two C. Kevin Wilsie is, was a former Chair, no longer serving on the ANC when, now that this protest is continuing.
Okay, thank you. Who are, who are the other protesters that are in the line?
Hi, I'm Ashley Steinberg, A S H L E Y S T E I N B E R G. And I am one of the two designated representatives for the group. But my neighbor, who is also on the protest, is here as well, so I'll let him introduce himself.
And who's that?
I'm Michael Shaco, S, excuse me, M I C H A E L, S C H A K O W.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so this license has been protested by the ANC in a group of five or more? Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, as far as the licensee, are there any preliminary matters in this case that the Board needs to address?
No preliminary matters for us.
The ANC, are there preliminary matters that the agency, I'm sorry, the ANC wish to bring to the attention of the Board?
No, not at this time, except that we have been, well, I guess we have been in mediation regarding this, and a settlement agreement has been provided to the applicant for review and response.
What about from the group of five or more, any preliminary matter?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is, it's a collaborative process.
Alright, thank you. Are any preliminary matters for the ANC, I'm sorry, the group of five or more that's concerned?
You'll, you'll have to forgive us, we're not used to this process, so I don't technically know what a preliminary matter is. All I would offer is that, I just want to clarify Commissioner Schenkel's comment about the settlement agreement. That was sent months and months and months ago.
Now, well, preliminary matters is that, not substantive matters, if you're having some concerns, that you believe that since all the parties are here today, that the party, that the Board could try to address, but not substantive, just like if they're the procedural type of matters, or if you-
Apologies, then yeah. I'll keep quiet.
No, no, please, this is, this is an opportunity to ask questions, or if there's, if you need some clarification on the process and procedures. So that, it's appropriate to ask a question that you, that you did raise. I just also want to raise this to you as a preliminary matter. This, this matter has been protested by, by the ANC in a group of five or more. And by operation of law, if the ANC signs a settlement agreement, and if the group of five or more is not a part of the settlement agreement, then the, the protest, the group of five or more's protests will fall. And so the group of five or more will no longer have jurisdiction to move forward. I'll also like to inform the group of five or more that the Board cannot force the, the parties to make you a part of a settlement agreement. So I just want to let you know that, that as a group of five or more, yes, you do have standing to move forward. But if there's a settlement with the ANC, if you're not a part of it, then you're standing to move forward with this hearing falls. So as a preliminary matter, I'm just sharing that with you to say that, that's how it is, because we have had many cases where, if there's a settlement agreement and the group is not a part of it, then the group is coming to the ABC Board to say, well, we need to, we need to move forward with the hearing, or you need to force them to make us a part of the settlement agreement. And I would just, I just want to say by operation, by operation of law, the ABC Board cannot do that, okay?
Thanks, understood.
Alright, thank you. Alright, this matter then is scheduled for a protest hearing. If the matter is not settled, this matter is scheduled for a protest hearing on August, I'm sorry, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two at one thirty PM. And just as an aside, I see because this is a case from nineteen, that this is from the renewal in two thousand and nineteen. We are also in a renewal for two thousand and twenty-two. And I would hope, I would hope that as the license comes up for renewal in two thousand and twenty-two, since we are still negotiating the renewal from two thousand and nineteen, it would help the process if the parties also address, if possible, you don't have to do that, address the renewal in two thousand and twenty-two, so therefore, we do not have another protest for the renewal for two thousand and twenty-two, since you're still talking about the renewal for twenty nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. Just as a, just some nudge to the parties, that you can still do that if you want, but I would ask that if you're, if you're speaking, that it would help the process, or it helped the Board, if you also address the renewal that's coming up for two thousand and twenty-two also.
Mr.-
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schenkel.
Does, does that, the two thousand and nineteen protest will, is still, will still stand even though the two thousand and twenty-two license is being renewed, is that correct?
So we're still, we're still moving forward with a hearing for the renewal for twenty, for two thousand and nineteen. So irrespective of what happens, we're still moving forward with that.
Got it.
So I'm just, I'm just saying the license is coming up for renewal again here in two thousand and twenty-two. So rather than maybe you file another protest for two thousand and twenty-two, maybe you can address those issues in the two thousand and nineteen renewal. I'm just saying, I'm not saying you have to do that.
Would, would we?
I would just say the licensee will be more than happy to continue discussions with, with parties from that.
Yeah, would, would we be required to file a protest in two thousand and twenty-two, like to continue if this was not resolved?
Not, not, that's separate, that's separate and apart.
Okay, separate and apart, got it.
Separate and apart, so therefore, therefore, we, we're moving forward with the renewal for twenty, for nine, for two thousand and nineteen. However, you're gonna get noticed that their license is up again. And so you still have an opportunity to protest the two thousand and twenty-two renewal. But all I'm saying is that because, because of, to assist the agency, that's all I'm saying.
Right, yeah, I got it, got it.
You can, I would say address those issues if possible.
Oh, yes, we, we want to address, we want to come to resolution. Definitely.
So that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm not requiring you to do that, but I'm just saying,
Right.
That's something to, excuse me, in your negotiation, that the parties can also keep in, keep in, as part of their discussion.
Got it.
Okay, alright, so I'll save it for this matter, then, the two thousand and nineteen renewal, that this matter is scheduled for protest hearing on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two at one thirty PM. Alright, alright, so, yeah, now that we've scheduled this matter for a protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about, because the Board practices, the Board practices since COVID-nineteen, which we're hopefully moving, moving through, have changed. But I doubt that the Board's procedures will change, because I believe the Board is gonna continue with virtual hearings, because it appears, at least it appears to me that the virtual hearing process, it, it doesn't work for the parties. Rather than you have to come to the boardroom and spend all day, you don't have any idea when, when we're gonna have a hearing. At least you could be in your home, your office, and you could log on when, when your case is called. So I just want to let folks know that we probably, it's more likely than not that the Board will continue with virtual hearings indefinitely, but we'll discuss that with the public. Alright, so as you know, the Board's hearings are conducted virtually, so it is more important than ever that protest hearings are focused and addresses only those issues that are being protested. Following this hearing, you will receive an email from ABRA Legal Assistant Imani Morland that will include a copy of a protest information form PIP and a copy of an exhibit form, as well as specific instruction for the hearing. You are required to complete and submit the PIP and exhibit forms at least seven days before the hearing. If we do not receive a copy of your forms seven days before the hearing, your application or your protest may be subject to dismissal. These documents need to be submitted to ABRA Legal and to the opposing parties. Please know that these documents greatly assist the Board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the parties on point during the hearing. Each side is limited to no more than five witnesses, and you will only have fifteen minutes to present your case. This includes all direct and cross-examination. The Board does not intend to hear testimony in matters that are not relevant to those issues that are being protested. Any questions by any side?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in this virtual format, where we have the opportunity to present video evidence, we have years' worth of videos for every Friday and Saturday night.
Yes, you can, you're able to provide video, but again, you need to share that with the other side, and we will give you an opportunity to, to, to do that.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure the virtual format allowed that.
The virtual, we have been doing this for two years, and we have perfected the art. So as long as you have perfected the art of how to utilize your computer, most of the problems that we have is that we normally have folks who want to share something in the public record, but they are unable to enact their equipment to share it.
Well, you're tapping into my deepest fear that I will mess this up, so we will practice in advance.
Right, but, 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 but I'm hoping that, that the parties will,
Yes.
The Board's wish is that the parties will settle this matter. And, 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 and one of the reasons why the Board supports settlement, this is your neighborhood. If the Board, the Board will make a decision if we have a hearing, but if the parties are able to settle it, this is your decision, this is your neighborhood, you can decide what it is that you want for your neighborhood. If it goes to a hearing, one side might be happy, one side might be, might be not happy based on the decision that's made by the Board, because I'm not sure if any of the Board members live within this vicinity. So we do support the parties settling these matters, because at the end of the day, you have to coexist in the space, and if you can come to mutual agreement in how you're gonna coexist, the Board will support that. So we do support the parties. But if, if the parties are unable to settle the matter, we will have a hearing, and then we will listen to testimony, and then we will make a decision. Alright, so thank you very much, we thank you very much for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please don't hesitate to contact Ms. Morland at two oh two four four two six nine four two, or contact her by email. Thank you very much. As I stated before, the Board supports settlements, if the party can settle this matter, we support that, we endorse that, but if not, we'll see you on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two at one thirty PM. Have a great day, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foschman. Alright, our next case is case number twenty-two PRO zero 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 one, Hillview Market, license number one one nine one six zero. Ms. Foschman, can you please elevate the rights of the parties in this case, please?
Please stand by. Dinesh Tandon, your rights have been elevated. Or rather, I can't elevate you, so I will unmute you. It has been communicated to me that he will be representing his wife for Hillview Market. Kirby Vining, your rights have been elevated. Eric Tomasi, your rights have been elevated. I do not see Commissioner Terry Janine Quinn. Commissioner Diane Barnes, your rights have been elevated. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Alright, I need to make sure that we, we have a representative from the Stronghold Civic Association, the Group of Five or More, the Bloomingdale Civic Association, and ANC five E. So I think we're missing, are we missing, what were we missing? We have, we have the Group of Five or More. Is there someone representing the Bloomingdale Civic Association? Do we have any representative of the Bloomingdale Civic Association? Do we have a representative of ANC five E?
Yes.
Alright.
I'm not sure on the video. I did, I was able to unmute myself.
Alright, um, you should be able to show your video if you have a video. Do we have someone from the Stronghold Civic Association? Yes, alright, thanks. Who is, do we know who the representative of the, it's a Terry Quinn? Is, is the representative of the Bloomingdale Civic Association? Um, is Ms. Quinn, can, if you're online, can you please identify yourself through the chat? Alright, let's, um, um, let, okay, good morning, everyone, this is, this is, this case is the Hillview Market. And who's the licensee? Can we have the licensee, please? Identify him or herself and spell and state their name for the record.
Hi, Your Honor, my name is Nidhi Tandon. I'm Dinesh Tandon's wife. And the, for the license number one one nine one six zero, the Hillview Market.
Now, can you, can you please spell and state your name for the record, ma'am?
It's N I D H I, Nidhi, first name, and the last name is Tandon, T A N D O N.
And are you on the, are you on the license, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Are you on the license?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and, alright. Alright, so and you, you're from the, the Hillview, the Hillview Market, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Alright, let's have, let's have the representative of the Stronghold Civic Association, please spell and state their name for the record, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm Kirby Vining, I'll spell K as in Kenneth, I R B Y. Last name Vining, V as in Victor, I N I N G. I'm one of the elected officers of the Stronghold Civic Association, representing them today.
Alright, thank you. Who's here from the Group of Five or More?
Yes, hello, my name is Eric Tomasi. My name is spelled E R I C, last name T O M A S I, and I'm the designated representative for the Group of Five.
Thank you. I'm Ms. Barnes, can you spell and state your name for the record and your representation, ma'am?
Yes, Diane Barnes, D I A N N E, Barnes, B A R N E S. I'm representing ANC.
Is there anyone here from the Bloomingdale Civic Association?
Ms. Quinn stated that she would be here, but she does have, um, an assistant. Could I actually get her on the line?
If, if you're able to get someone from the Bloomingdale Civic Association, please do, because if not, I'm gonna make a motion that we they be dismissed.
Okay.
If that's why, I want to make sure that they're not having any technical difficulties.
Excuse me, Your Honor, can I authorize my husband, Dinesh Tandon, to talk on behalf of me?
Is your husband on the license, ma'am? Yes, you, yes, you can, you can, you're giving us, you're giving, you're saying that you want to represent you, that's fine, ma'am. What is your husband's name and is he on the line?
Yes, yes.
Hello, Your Honor, my name is Dinesh Tandon.
Can you spell and state your name for the record, please, sir?
Dinesh is D as in David, I N E S H, last name Tandon, T A N D O N.
And you are, are you on the license, sir?
Sir, I'm not on the license, no.
Alright, but your wife is authorizing you to speak.
Yes, sir.
For her today. Alright, now, do you guys have a camera?
I, my best, but I, for some reason, I don't know why, I don't, I have a camera, but I don't know how to turn it on.
Alright.
I'm not being able to turn on the camera, sir, I'm really sorry.
Alright, that's, that's fine, that's fine. Ms. Barnes, are you able to find, find someone from this Bloomingdale Civic-
Do I need to send a link to Ms. Evelyn Brown?
I'm sorry, who?
Evelyn Brown is the assistant to Terry for the Bloomingdale Civic Association.
Yes, 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 Mr., Mr. Vining?
Yes, I just sent an email to Ms. Quinn and her alternate, and I just in this second received a note from Ms. Quinn saying she's on her way, she's having trouble logging in. It's Terry Janine Quinn.
Alright, do we know what type of, do you know what type of problem she has to log in, sir? She can, if not, she can call in on the telephone?
She didn't say, she just had trouble logging in, I'll pass that along.
There's a phone number where she can call in, and if she calls, then we can elevate her rights. The reason why I'm taking this time is because all parties have to be here for the status hearing, if they're not here, I will make a motion to dismiss them. So that's one of the reasons I want to make sure that folks are not having technical difficulties. folks are not having technical difficulties in logging in. And it's that they're not here because they're not here, not because they haven't got any technical difficulties. So if she, if she's online and she wants us to elevate her rights, or if she's on the telephone, just let her, just let us know, and we will elevate her, we will unmute her line on the telephone or elevate her rights on the um, on the phone. I'm sorry. Virtually. Has anyone heard from Ms. from Ms. Quinn or from her assistant to, so we can move on, because we need to move on with this.
Forward the um email to Ms. Brown, who is her alternate.
Do we know, are they trying to log in? Do we need to?
Let me give her a call back and see.
Do we need to, are they, do their rights need to be elevated? So I need to know that they're there, so I can have our I T specialists elevate their rights. So that's what I'm trying to find out.
Okay. Oh, let me give you the um, then the event number. Two, three, zero, eight.
Uh, Ms. Barnes, please mute yourself, ma'am.
Hold on, Evelyn, uh, would, repeat what you said.
Just mute your, mute your line, ma'am, so we don't need to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairperson, we have a new call-in user.
Who's that?
The number starts with a two. I'm going to unmute them to see if they are Terry Janine Quinn.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Terry Janine Quinn.
Alright, okay, fine, thanks, alright. Alright, good morning, everyone. This is um, again, the protest here is the case number twenty P R O zero 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 one, Hillview Market license number one one nine one six zero. Alright, so I'll have the parties introduce themselves again for the record. So I would like Mr. Tandon, that your wife, your stated, I mean, your wife had stated that you were representing her, so can you please spell and state your name for the record, please, the licensee?
Uh, my name is Dinesh Tandon, D B I N E S H, last name T A N D O N.
And what is your relationship to this establishment, sir?
Uh, I am licensee's husband.
Alright, is the licensee with you?
Yes, Your Honor.
Can, can she also identify herself for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Nidhi Tandon, first name N I D H I, Nidhi, and the last name is Tandon, T A N D O N, Tandon.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, Representative from the Stronghold Civic Association, please spell and state your name for the record, please.
Yes, this is Kirby Vining, representing the Stronghold Civic Association. Spell my name, K I R B Y, last name B I N I N G. Thank you.
Thank you. The Group of Five or More?
Yes, the designated representative, uh, my name is Eric Tomasi, first name E R I C, last name T O M A S I.
The Bloomingdale Civic Association, will the representatives please spell and state their name for the record?
Yes, it's Terry Janine Quinn. Terry Janine Quinn. Um, hang on, let me.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you spell your name for the record? I'm having some problems hearing you. Ms. Quinn? Ms. Quinn? Ms. Quinn? Ms. Quinn, we, I, we appear to have lost you. Uh, Ms. Barnes, one more time, please, spell and state your name for the record and your representation.
Sir, what did you say?
Can you, can you one more time, please spell and state your name for the record and your representation, ma'am?
D I A N N E, Ba- uh, Diane Barnes, B A R N E S.
Alright, fine, thank you. I just want to state for the record, all the, all the like, I'm sorry, all the protestors are here. I know that Ms. Quinn from the Bloomingdale Civic Association had started to um, she came on the line. I don't know what concerns that she's having. Hopefully, she'll be able to join us on, but there, there should be no issues because she did identify herself as one of the protestors, and so, but the board's purpose, she was here today, so I, I'm not going to ask the board to, 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 um, to vote to deny standing to the, the Bloomingdale Civic Association, because they were here today, and I, I, I'm not quite sure what's now going on with excuse me, connection. Alright. Are there any preliminary matters that each side needs to make? Um, any preliminary matters that needs to be brought to the attention to the board? And I will start off with the licensee.
Um, no, sir, um, it is just that we are um asking for addition of liquor to the existing beer and wine.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, I, I don't, I don't, I, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I don't want to go into the substance, but it's more so, do you have any problem, reach, is, is there stuff you don't understand when I said preliminary, so not necessarily the substance of the case, but just preliminary, if you have any issues.
No, sir, it's, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, what about um, the Strong, the Stronghold Civic Association? Any preliminary matters need to be brought to the attention of the board?
No preliminary matters that we're aware of that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tomasi?
No, as mentioned by Dinesh, I think, I believe you mentioned this, we are still working on mediation.
Okay, um, Ms. Barnes?
No, none for A N C.
Is Ms. Quinnish, has she joined us? Is she back? Alright, alright, okay.
I think Ms. Evelyn showed up. Did you see her name? Oh, there's Ms. Quinn, she's back on the phone.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Brown, can you, can you, can you please identify yourself for the record, please?
Myself, Evelyn Brown, I'm with the Bloomingdale Civic Association. I am the alternate to uh Terry Janine Quinn.
Alright, fine, can you spell your name for the record, ma'am?
Evelyn, E V E L Y N, last name is Brown, B R O W N.
Alright, thank you. Alright, do you, alright, this matter-
I, I'm also back. This is Terry Janine Quinn. I've, I've been able to dial back in.
Alright, Ms. Quinn, can you please spell and state your name for the record again, ma'am?
Sure, it's Terry, T E R I, Janine, J A N I N E, Quinn, Q U I N N, and I'm here as president of the Bloomingdale Civic Association.
Alright, fine, thank you. Do you have any prelim- preliminary matters that you need to bring to the attention of the board?
I do not.
Alright, fine, thank you. Alright, this matter that is scheduled for a protest hearing on April twentieth, twenty twenty-two at one thirty P M. I heard the parties spoke about the fact that they are working on mediation. There are a lot of um, there are there are four protestors group in this, in this, in this matter. I hope that the parties can, uh, the board supports settlement, the parties negotiating and, and um coming to an agreement if possible. Um, one of the reasons why the board supports settlement, this is an establishment within the boundaries of of your neighborhood where you live. And so if you are, if the parties are able to discuss the matter and come to terms, it would be helpful. However, if the parties are unable to come to terms, then we will have uh, a protest hearing on the twentieth. I just want to remind the licensee that in coming to, in, in, in going to mediation, that you, you have four separate groups that you have. You have to speak to all the groups.
Yes.
To come to an agreement. I just want to let you know that because if, if you, if you come to an agreement with just the A N C, the the Group of Five or More will fall. However, the Civic Association, this, the Stronghold Civic Association, Bloomingdale Civic Association can still move forward with the protest hearing if they, if they do not agree to, to settlement. So I just want to let you know that you have to speak to all the parties, and hopefully, in, in whatever agreement that you, if a great, if an agreement is reached, then you're able to, you're, you're, you're negotiating with all the parties.
Yes.
I, uh, alright, so just want to put that, bring that to your attention.
Will be enough, thank you.
Yes, okay, thanks. And I just want to let the parties know that if we go, if we do go to a hearing, I would like the parties to kind of try to figure out who's going to represent the groups in a sense that rather than have, we're not going to allow four separate hearings to go, to, to move forward. So I would ask that if, if we, I'm, I'm hoping we don't go to a hearing, but if we do go to a hearing, the party should think about the fact that who would be the designated, uh designated representative to present the case if we were to move forward at a protest hearing. Alright?
Mr. Anderson, this is Eric Tomasi from the Group of Five, can-
Yes, Mr. Tomasi, yes, sir.
Um, I have a question about the board's policy. Um, from what I just heard, you are stating that all, we must have a combined agreement with the applicant.
It doesn't have to be a combined agreement. I will just let, I will just let the licensee know that he has to agree, he has to negotiate with all the different groups. As the Group of Five or More, I just, the only exception, though, if, if the A N C signs a settlement agreement, if the Group of Five or More does not agree with the terms of the agreement, the Group of Five or More, um, they will lose standing to move forward with the hearing. Only the Group of Five or More.
Right. Well, my question is actually isn't, my question is actually in the opposite.
Yes, sir.
Five would come to an agreement, but the A N C and the, the associations would still want to go directly to a protest. How would the, the, uh, the board look at that?
We would, the Group of Five would, would, would provide a settlement agreement to the board. The board would review it, and the board would, if it's appropriate, the, the board would um sign off on a settlement agreement that is received, that the Group of Five or More presents. And then the Group of Five or More would fall out of the, the protest hearing, and the other groups would move, would move forward.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So, but yeah, that's, so you, you can, if, if, if any side can, uh, come to an agreement, sign an agreement, and they would fall, and they would fall out, but each, but the, the Civic Association, they have their individual standing, and the A N C has their individual standing. The only group, if there is a settlement agreement, the only group that would fall aside would be the Group of Five or More, because the law says that the A N C is the representative of the residents. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Alright, now that we've scheduled this matter for protest hearing, there are a few things that I would like to instruct you about, because the board's practices under the COVID restrictions have changed. As you know, the board's hearings are conducted virtually. It, so it is very important than ever that protest hearings are focused and addressed with only those issues that have been protested. Following this hearing, you'll receive an email from Abra Legal, Legal Assistant, Imani Morland, that will include a copy of a protest information form, PIP, and a copy of an exhibit form, as well as specific instructions for the hearing. You are required to complete and submit the PIP and exhibit forms at least seven days before the date of the hearing. Again, seven days before the date of the hearing, each side must disclose their documents and witnesses that they're going to rely, they're going to rely on. So these documents and witnesses needs to be disclosed to each side, and it also must be provided to Abra, Abra Legal. Please know that these documents greatly assist the board in narrowing the protest issues, facilitating the process, and keeping the partisan point near the hearing. Each side is limited to no more than five witnesses, and you'll have only sixty minutes to present your case. This includes all direct and exact, all direct and cross-examination. The board does not intend to hear testimony on matters that are not relevant to those issues that are being protested. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions by anyone?
No, sir.
Alright. We thank you greatly for your cooperation. If you have any questions at any time leading up to the hearing, please do not hesitate to contact Ms. Morland at two oh two four four two six nine four two or contact her by email. Thank you very much. I wish you good luck in your mediation. If there's an assistance that the board can provide to you to ensure that the process moved, moved by the agency, I'm sorry, the agency can provide, please contact Ms. Morland. I'm hoping that the parties can settle this matter, but if you're unable to settle this matter, we will see you on April twentieth at one thirty for a hearing. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, our next case is case number twenty-one, C M P zero 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 six seven, Seven Seas Restaurant, license number six five four. Ms. Foschman, can you please elevate the rights of the government and the licensee in this case, please?
Please stand by. Christina Okura, your rights have been elevated, and Walter Adams, your rights have been elevated. That is all.
Thank you. Alright, good morning again.
Good morning, Your Honor. Or good morning, Chairman.
Alright. Mister, um, I'm sorry, Mister Adams, can you please spell and state your name for the record, please?
Good morning, uh, Walter Adams, uh, representing the District of Columbia, and that is W A L T E R, uh, first name, and last name is A D A M S.
Mr. Cora, can you please spell and state your name for the record, please? Mr. Cora? Ms. Foschman, have, I, I see that Mr. Mr. Cora is on my line, but has, has her line been unmuted?
Chairperson, I manually unneeded her now.
Thank you. Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Can you please spell and state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my first name, Christina, C H R I S T I N A, last name's Okura, spelled O K U R A.
Alright, thank you. Miss, good morning again, um. Mister Adams, are there any preliminary matters in this case?
There are no preliminary, oh, actually, there is a preliminary in this case, I'm, uh, I apologize, I'm just, uh, projecting. Anyway, there's a preliminary matter, the parties have discussed the, the charge uh involved in this case, uh, which I believe is a, a, a charge for there being no A B C manager, uh, and we're able to uh, make profit to the board and offer and compromise.
And what is that, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, were to resolve the, the single charge, um, the parties proposed a payment of of, of a one thousand dollar fine to be paid within a hundred and twenty days. Or if the licensee fails to pay it, the license will be suspended indefinitely until the fine is paid.
Thank you. Mr. Cora, it's my understanding that there's an offer and compromise. The offer and compromise is that there is a fine of one thousand dollars payable within a hundred and twenty days. If the fine has not been paid, the license will be suspended until the fine has been paid. Is this your understanding of the- The license will be suspended until the fine has been paid. Is this your understanding of the offering compromise?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Are you aware that by, if your client aware that by accepting an offering compromise that they're giving up their right to a hearing?
Yes.
If your client also aware that by accepting an offering compromise that they're giving up their right to appeal this matter?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Any questions by the board members? Uh, here none. I make a motion that the offering compromise of a fine of one thousand dollars be accepted. One thousand dollars payable in one hundred and twenty days be accepted. If the fine has not been paid. The license will be suspended until the fine has been paid. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter passed six zero zero. I want to thank the parties for settling this matter. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Alright, the next case in our calendar is case number. Twenty-one CMP zero 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 six six Cafe Citron, license number six zero one three eight. Miss Fosman, can you please elevate the, the rights of the licensee in this case, please?
Chairperson, nobody is present for the licensee's behalf, but Walter Adams is here. That is all.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mister Adams, can you please identify, can you please identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Mister Chairman Walter Adams, representing the District of Columbia.
Mister Adam. I see the license is not here and. I, I do not have a date for the show card here. Do you have the date for the show card here, Mister Adam? I don't see the date on my calendar.
I have it, I, um, no, Mister Senshi did not provide me, so I don't have it.
The, the, I apologize. I, I, I just, I just noticed that I did not have a date. For the show card hearing, but we will provide the parties with shortly with the date of the show card hearing. Alright, thank you, Mister.
Thank you very much, sir.
Alright. Alright, the next case in our calendar is case number twenty-one CMP zero 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 seven. M K Lounge and Restaurant, license number eight eight seven eight seven. Uh, Miss Fosman, can you please elevate the rights of the licensee in this case? I think it's Mister. Mister Bianco, I believe.
Richard Bianco, your rights have been elevated. That is all, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Mister Adams, can you please identify for the record, please?
Yes, Walter Adams, representing the District of Columbia.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Richard Bianco, on behalf of the licensee M K Lounge.
Good morning, good morning. Uh, Mister Adams, are there any preliminary matters in this case?
Yes, there's a matter, uh, in this case, I, I believe that what. The situation here is that the, the, the district has amended the notice. Um, of, of status and show cause hearings in this matter. Uh, I believe the board has, uh, received it, but if, um. If you may, the, the district would like to move that the notice be amended, uh. We're, we're asking for on the record that the notice be amended, um. Uh, from the one that has three charges, which was, I believe, sent and, uh, signed on February second. Uh, of, of this year to be, uh, noticed from February seventeenth, which, uh, amends it down to. One charge which was signed on, uh, February seventeen.
Mister Bianco.
Uh, no objection, and I believe that would raise a thirty day notice issue, which we waive.
Thank you. Alright, here no objections, so that the notice is, is amended and the licensee has, has waived the thirty day notice. So therefore, with that said, then this matter then is scheduled for a show cause hearing on April sixth. At one thirty P M, April sixth at one thirty P M.
Thank you, Mister.
Thank you very much, Mister.
Alright, thank you. Have a great day.
Alright, take care.
Alright, the next case in our calendar is case number twenty-one, two five one zero 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 three zero. Rose Bar Lounge, license number seven seven eight eight three. This. This case is canceled because an offering, as, an offering compromise has been provided to the board. And the board will review this offering compromise on its licensing agenda. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty CIT zero zero one two nine. Talee Thai Restaurant, license number one six one two nine. This hearing has been canceled. The government dismissed the case due to the payment of the fine, see board order number twenty twenty-two dash zero six. Six. Mister Adams, it's the end of our day. At least our morning calendar. Thank you for your appearance today. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Uh, have a great day.
Thank you. Are we, and we're at the end of our morning calendar, so we are gonna move on to our afternoon calendar. The, the first case in our afternoon calendar is case number twenty-one PRO zero 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 nine zero. Ashland Beer Company, license number one one eight five five five. This was a protest hearing. Um, this case has been canceled. The parties have provided a settlement to the board for its consideration. The next case that's on our afternoon calendar is another protest hearing, case number twenty-one PRO zero 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 seven zero. Bacada Wine Bar, license number one one five seven one nine. This case has been continued to March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at one thirty P M. The next case in our calendar is another protest hearing, case number twenty-one PRO zero 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 eight five. Bar Liquor, license number one zero five two zero seven. This hearing has been continued to March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at one thirty P M. The next case in our calendar is case number. Twenty-one CMP zero 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 three six Champion Kitchen, license number one zero three zero five five. This case has been continued to March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two at one thirty P M. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty CC zero 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 one one. Cete Astoria, license number eight nine two zero five. This case has been canceled. The board was provided with a offering compromise that we will review. On our legal agenda. The next case in our calendar is case number twenty-one CIT zero zero four five nine. Stop and Shop Liquors, license number nine 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 two zero. This case has been canceled. The board has been provided an offer and compromise that we review on our legal agenda. And the last case in our calendar, the fact finding case, case number twenty-one, two five one zero 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 four one Focus D C. License number one one eight zero one five. This case has been continued to March ninth, twenty twenty-two at one thirty P M. Just as an FYI for the public, if anyone is signing, listening to this hearing, while we canceled all these hearings. Um, the board was of the belief up through last night that we were having a. With that, we were having a protest hearing on Ashland. And, um, and so by having a protest hearing, we believe that that protest hearing would have lasted all afternoon. And probably into the night, but we were, the board was advised. Are provided overnight a settlement agreement, and so therefore this case has now been settled. And so we have no afternoon calendar and we. It was, we, we could not have moved the cases that were canceled. Because we thought that our afternoon would have been occupied by the protest here. And so that's one of the reasons why. Our entire afternoon was canceled because we had anticipated. That we were having a one thirty protest hearing that would have. Uh, consumed most of the afternoon and most of the evening. But as I've always stated, the board supports settlement agreement and the board commend, commend the party. That at the eleventh hour, they were able to settle this matter. And so I wanna, um, publicly commend the parties. For their diligence in bringing closure to this matter. Alright, so now that we have dispensed with our calendar for the day. Let me now go to our legal agenda. The first matter on our legal agenda is an offer, review of an offer and compromise in lieu of a hearing dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. This is for case number twenty-one, two five one zero 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 three zero. Um, this is Rose Bar Lounge, license number, excuse me, zero seven seven eight eight three. The offering compromise, the two charges, allows the establishment to be used for disorderly purpose. D C Official Code Section twenty-five eight two three eight two, the primary tier violation. And that charge has been dismissed. The second charge. Charge number two is a failure to follow security plan, D C Official Code Section twenty-five eight two three eight six. The fine is a fifteen hundred dollar fine paid within a hundred and twenty days. Or the license should be suspended indefinitely until the fine is paid. I make a motion that we. That the board accepts this offering compromise. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, I second the motion. Will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree in the matter pass six zero zero. The second case in our calendars. On our legal agenda is a review of an offering compromise in lieu of a hearing dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The case number twenty CC zero 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 one one, Cete Astoria, Astoria, license number. Zero two nine two zero five. And the offering compromise is. Uh, charge one, um, you charge one failure of the licensee. They sold alcoholic beverage to a person under the age of twenty-one. The statute of authority, D C Code Section twenty-five seven eight one. And the term is a warning. I make a motion that the ABC Board approves this offering compromise. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number three on our current legal agenda is a review of the offering compromise. In lieu of a hearing dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two for case number twenty CIT zero zero four five nine. Stop and Shop Liquors, license number zero nine 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 two zero. And the offering compromise is as follows. It's failure to comply with restriction on the use of signs. This is D C Code Section twenty-five seven six three. The fine range, the fine is for five hundred dollars payable within sixty days. Or the license shall be suspended indefinitely until the fine has been paid. I make a motion that ABC Board approves this. Oh, I see. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number four on our legal agenda, review of a settlement agreement dated January fifth, twenty twenty-two between his and hers. Restaurant and Advisory Neighborhood Commission five C. The license number for his and hers restaurant is, um, license number one two zero zero one zero. I make a motion that the board approve the settlement agreement. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number five, review of a settlement agreement dated February ninth, twenty twenty-two between Advisory Neighborhood Commission eight C. And Ace's Lounge, license number one one nine three one four. I make a motion that ABC Board approve this agreement. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number six. Review of a settlement agreement dated February second, twenty twenty-two between Advisory Neighborhood Commission one C. The Colorama Citizens Association and Andy's Pizza Eighteenth Street, license number one one nine seven oh five. I make a motion that we approve this agreement. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett, seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass. Six zero zero. Number seven on our. Legal agenda is a review of a settlement agreement dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two between. Advisory Neighborhood Commission two E, the Citizens Association of Georgetown. Johnny A B E D R A B B O on behalf of the group of five or more individuals. And Church, license number one one nine eight five one. I make a motion that we approve this agreement. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number eight, review of an amendment to a settlement agreement dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty-two between. The Advisory Neighborhood Commission, Advisory Neighborhood Commission two E, the Citizens Association of Georgetown. And the Graham Georgetown, license number one one nine 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 three. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Cato.
Bobby Cato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hanson, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Grandis, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Number nine, review of M P D's request for fact finding, for fact finding hearing dated. June, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, case number twenty-five two five one zero 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 three. The fireplace, license number zero one four four one nine. This is just an FYI for the board. And number ten is a review of the suspension of on-premises alcohol sales and consumption notice. Of eighteenth emergency room making, and I, I'm just gonna read. A, a short portion of the room making that we're voting on today. On January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Mayor Bowser issued Mayor's Order twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Which extended the public emergency declared by Mayor's Order twenty twenty dash zero four five dated. March eleventh, twenty 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 to March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. The Mayor's Order also clarified that the vaccine, vaccination entry requirements applied for persons. Twelve years of age or older and that persons eighteen, eighteen years of age or older. Who are subject to the vaccination entry requirement would be required to provide proof of their identity with a proof of vaccination. Due to the decline of the Omicron variant and this decrease in COVID nineteen cases and hospitalizations. Mayor Bowser issued Mayor's Order twenty twenty-two dash zero two nine on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The Mayor's Order notified the public of the end of the public health emergency, the end of the mask mandate at certain venues effective. March first, twenty twenty-two, and the end of the requirement for certain private venues. and the end of the requirement for certain private venues to check vaccine status effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty two. The mayor's order makes clear that businesses are still permitted to impose vaccination requirement, verification requirement, and may not prohibit their employees from wearing face masks or coverings. In order to ensure that a district's alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverage regulations are consistent with the mayor's most recent order, the board finds immediate action is necessary to adopt in margin of the rules. These rules remove, remove two earlier mandates, namely that employees and patrons of on premises A B C licensed establishment must wear a mask while indoors, and that persons who are twelve years of age or older show proof of vaccination prior to entering the licensed premises. The emergency rulemaking is necessary to provide licenses with the option to still require that masks be worn indoors, and that patrons provide proof of vaccination for the purposes of protecting their employees and the public. Therefore, I make an emotion that the board adopt, that the board adopts the suspension of the on premises alcohol sales, alcohol sales and consumption notice of eighteen emergency rulemaking. Is there a I'm sorry, um, these emergency rules will supersede the emergency rules that the board adopted on January twelfth, twenty twenty two. These emergency rules will take effect on March second, twenty twenty two, and will expire in one hundred and twenty days or by June thirtieth, twenty two, twenty twenty two, unless superseded. Is there a second to adopt these rules?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Thank you. And we're gonna move on to our license agenda, and just as, just as an F Y to the public, um, when, 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 when the board takes its vote, the board members are called by order of seniority. So that's how the board members are called. At chair, I always vote last, but just let it, just so the public knows that um, the way I'm calling the board members is based on their seniority on the board. Alright, we now move to our license agenda. The first matter on our license agenda is a review application for stipulated license with letter of A N T support for expansion of the premises. This is for Ocean Lounge, license number one, one, four, one, zero, six. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number two on our license agenda is a review request to remove the license from safekeeping for reopening on April first, twenty twenty two. This is for the residents in Washington, D C Thomas Circle, license number zero, six, zero, three, nine, seven. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis.
Mister Grandis and Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number three, review application for safekeeping of license, which is for Accura, license number zero, nine, one, one, three, zero. I make a motion that, that the board extends, grants this safekeeping request through September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis and Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Excuse me, Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number four, review application for entertainment endorsement to provide live entertainment indoors and outdoors on the sidewalk cafe. This is for Pearl Dive Oyster Palace Blackjack, license number zero, eight, five, three, eight, two. I make a motion that we placard this matter. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short and Mister Grandis, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number five, review application for change, expansion of opening days and hours. This is for Sushi Tara, license number zero, zero, nine, six, five, five. I make a motion that we placard this matter. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second emotion along with Miss Crockett, um, will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number six, review application for change of hours to add Sunday hours. This is for Three Way Spirits, license number one, one, nine, one, three, one. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll, roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number seven, review application for tasting permit endorsement. This is for Hans Towers Market, license number one, one, five, eight, five, zero. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis.
Mister Grandis and Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number eight, review application for the carryout and delivery endorsement. This is for Hilton Garden in D C, U S Capitol, license number one, zero, nine, five, zero, six. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second? Miss Crockett and Mister, and Mister Grandis, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number nine, review request to refund application and annual fees rendered for the A B C license application, which will ultimately return to the applicant by license in addition, license in division. This is for House of Wine and Beer, license number one, two, zero, three, seven, four. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. This is an F Y for, for the, the public. One of the reasons why the board voted to return the fees in this particular case is that they had, um, tried to apply for a license in an area that such a license was prohibited by operation of law. So, so because such a license, they couldn't, a license could not be offered in that area. That's the only reason why the board is returning the licensing fee, because of the matter of course, the board does not refund licensing fees once they are made to the agency. Alright. Number ten is a review request to remove the sidewalk cafe endorsement from the license. This is Sensi Bar Cantina, license number one, one, seven, zero, one, two. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short and Mister Grandis, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. We now move to the board temporary license and one day substantial change document. The first request is a request from William Wine Gan. This is for one day license class F. This is for Saint Patrick's Day Celebration. This is on March twelfth, twenty twenty two. Their, the license number is one, two, zero, six, one, zero, two hundred attendees. Fortune Security Guards, I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number two, it's a request from Connor Dolan for one day license class F. This is for wedding. This is May twenty first, twenty twenty two. The license number is one, two, zero, six, eight, two. A hundred and fifty attendees. I make a motion that we approve this request. Is there a second? Miss Crockett, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter passes six, zero, zero. Alright, we now have for the next, for number three that I'm gonna read, number three, number four, number five. These are three requests made by, I'm gonna, um, read the three um, requests, and I'm gonna make a motion that the board deny these requests. So the next three request, number three, the request from Jesse B. Rouse for one day license class G. This was for an event on March thirteenth, March sixteenth, twenty twenty two. The other request is, um, another request from Jesse B. Rouse for a one day license class G. This is, was for an event on March fourteenth, twenty twenty two. And number five is another request from Jesse B. Rouse for one day license class G for an event on March twenty two, twenty nine, twenty twenty two. I make a motion that the A B C board denies, um, these three requests. Is there a second?
Mister Short, a second.
Mister Short, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Alright, now I'm gonna read, um, number five through in the eleven on our list. I'm gonna state what the request has been made, and, um, at, at the end of this list, I'm gonna ask the A B C board to grant, to grant these licenses. Alright, so number six on the list is a request from Ian Richardson Reeves for one day license class G. This is for wedding on March twelfth, twenty twenty two. The license number is one, one, two, zero, five, nine, zero, a hundred and fifty attendees. Number six on the list, a request from Richard Diaz for one day license class G. This again a wedding on May, March fifth, twenty twenty two. The license number is one, two, zero, five, nine, eight. Number eight on the list is a request from Jennifer Currie for one day license class G. This is the annual, excuse me, Irish festival. The, this is on March nineteenth, excuse me, twenty twenty two. The license number is one, two, zero, six, one, five, with twenty five, twenty five hundred attendees. Number nine is a request from Griffin Lary, L A H R E, for a one day license class G. This is a wedding on March twenty six, twenty, twenty two. The license, the license number is one, two, zero, six, four, three. Number ten was for a request from Pearl Dive Oyster Palace Blackjack. A one day substantial change. This event was, um, scheduled for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, and for March first, twenty twenty two. License number is zero, eight, five, three, eight, two. The substantial change number is twenty two S C zero, zero, five, four, seven. Number eleven is another request from Pearl Dive Oyster Palace Blackjack. A one day, like, one day substantial change license. Um, the date of the event was February twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. And the license number is zero, eight, five, three, eight, two. I then make a motion that A B C board up, grants these, the requests that were just played, faced in the record. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, a second. The motion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass six, zero, zero. Number twelve on the list is a pub crawl, a request from Good Bar Crawl. It's a pub crawl. This is, the date of the event is April twenty third, twenty twenty two. The substantial change, license number is one, one, two, seven, five, four. The substantial change number is twenty two S C zero, zero, five, five, zero. They're asking for a, not for us to approve nine hundred and fifty participants to participate in this pub crawl on the U Street corridor. I make a motion that we grant the request to approve the nine hundred and fifty participants. Is there a second?
Edward Grandis will second.
Mister Grandis, a second emotion will now have a roll call vote on the motion, Mister Short.
Mister Short, I disagree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Robbie Crockett, I agree.
Miss Hanson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree, the matter pass five, zero, five, two, one. Alright, we now move to our license administrative docket. On our license and administrative docket, there are fifteen applicants. And I'll review the names of the fifteen applicants, and at the end of the list, I will ask that A B C board grants the request. The first request, the request, I'm sorry. The first request is a request from James Dabney Bibb the third. This is for personal importation permit application. The license number is twenty two I M P zero, 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 three. The second request, the request from Kate L. Richardson. This is for, also for personal importation permit application. The license number is twenty two I M P zero, 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 two. Number three is a request from Across the Pond Restaurant and Pub. License number is one, zero, six, zero, nine, nine. Their retailer C Restaurant is a letter of request to remove Gerald B. Feeny as a member. Number four is a request from Mudrock's Supermarket, license number one, zero, five, eight, two, two. Their retailer B. Class change application from a class B license to a class A license. Number five is a request from Carolina Bar and Grill, license number one, one, four, two, seven, two. Their retailer C Restaurant, change of hours application. Number six. A request from Truefly Imports, license number one, one, six, eight, seven, five. Their retailer Internet A. Transfer to new location application from seventeen oh one Florida Avenue Northwest to seventy two, twelve Georgia Avenue Northwest. Number seven, a request from Delia's, Delia's Catering, license number one, zero, three, five, six, three. This is a caterer's license, transfer to new location application from Transfer to new location application from six twenty six South Washington Street. Falls Church, Church, Virginia to thirty to three sixty two West Broad Street Falls Church, Virginia. Number eight, a request from. Sangria Bar and Grill, license number one two zero six seven five. Their caterers license, new license application. Number nine. A request from Silver Dyna slash Silver Social. License number one two zero one zero five retailer C Restaurant, new light, new A B C license application. Number ten, request from Uncle Lee Seafood, Seafood, license number one two zero six five four. A retailer, a liquor store transfer with sale application. Number eleven, a request from The River Inn Bistro by Butler, license number one two zero five five eight. Retailer C Hotel Transfer Without Sale Application. Number twelve, a request from Salatai, license number one two zero zero five six. Retailer C Restaurant, new A B C license application. Number thirteen, a request from Walk and Roll Bar and Lounge. License number one two zero six zero six. Retailer C Tavern Transfer With Sale Application. Number fourteen, a request from. Lunas de Buenos Aires Argentinian Street Food, license number one one nine two one five. Their retailer C Restaurant, new A B C license application. And number fifteen is a request from Andy's Pizza Eighteenth Street, license number one one nine seven zero five. Their retailer C Restaurant, new A B C license application. I therefore make a motion that A B C board grants these. Applications. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, the second emotion. Will now have a roll call vote on the motion. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Henson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. The matter pass six zero zero. Thank you very much. We're now at the end of all agenda items for the day. And we have covered all the calendar for the day. So the board will now adjourn. For the day. As chairperson of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board for the District of Columbia. And in accordance with Title III, Chapter four or five, Office of Open Government. I move that A B C board hold a closed meeting on March ninth twenty twenty two. For the purpose of discussing and hearing reports concerning ongoing or planned investigations of alleged criminal or civil misconduct. Or violation of law or regulations and seeking legal advice. From our legal counsel on the board's investigative agenda, legal agenda and license agenda for March ninth twenty twenty two. As published in the D C Register on March fourth twenty twenty two. Is there a second?
Miss Crockett seconds.
Miss Crockett, the second emotion, I will now take a roll call vote on the motion before, now that it's been second. Mister Short.
Mister Short, I agree.
Mister Kato.
Bobby Kato, I agree.
Miss Crockett.
Rafi Crockett, I agree.
Henson.
Jenny Hansen, I agree.
Mister Grandis.
Edward Grandis, I agree.
And Mister Anderson, I agree. As it appears, the motion has passed six zero zero. I hereby give notice that A B C board will hold this aforementioned closed meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. Notice will also be posted, posted on A B C board and room bulletin board. Placed on electronic calendar and A B R's website and published in the D C Register in as timely a manner as. I would like to thank our A B C board members and a member of the public who have signed in. All in today to participate in this hearing. Um, thank you for your active participation. We are now adjourned for the day. And I now direct all board members to return to executive session for further development. Have a great afternoon. Thank you very much.